Order the Village Gurnee Planning and Zoning Meeting for this Wednesday, October 5th, 2016. Could we have a roll call, please?
Bow.
Here.
Crawford. McFarland.
Here.
Nordentoff.
Here.
Pfaff.
Here.
Paysek.
Here.
And Sula.
Present. We do have a quorum, but if anyone will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the, or next item on the agenda is an opportunity for public comment. This is an opportunity from anyone from the general public who would like to ask a question or make a comment about something that is not on this evening's agenda. I'm going to close the floor to that item. Next item is the approval of our minutes, of the minutes from our meeting that was held on September 7th. Is that the one?
Yeah.
I do have one minor change on these. Gosh, if the pages aren't numbered, but way back, gosh, it's in the, it's on the, one, two, three, on the fifth page, fifth page. About a quarter of the way down, the two-sentence jabber there that starts with Mr. Sula didn't open the floor to the public. He stated that he would like, right up the word "like," I think we need, well, actually, after Mr. Capetta, to start, as he understands that he is representing the neighborhood. Okay. Any other changes or questions or comments about the minutes from the 7th?
Move to approve?
Yes, amended.
Yes, amended. Thank you very much.
Okay, turn to the second.
Second.
Second, was that Mr. Pfaff?
That would mean.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Any questions or comments about the minutes from the September 21st meeting? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Pfaff, second by Mr. Paysek. Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is a public hearing for a variance petition by Joseph and Mary Barrera at 1575 Bell Plain Avenue. Tracy, do you have staff report?
Sure. They are seeking to install a six-foot-tall, solid fence from the rear elevation of their home out to their corner side yard and then all the way back to their rear yard. As you may remember, at the last PCB meeting, we looked at making a change to the fence ordinance specifically addressing corner side yards. And on Monday night, the village board did adopt those changes. Now, in this case, since the village board adopted those amendments, this is a reverse corner lot, and as a reverse corner lot, anytime you come off the rear elevation of the home, you have to set that solid six-foot-tall fence back two-thirds of the adjacent lots' front yard setback. In this case, the lot immediately adjacent to the east is owned by the Park District, and there will be passive recreation area and no structure. The two-thirds of the front yard setback requirement is in the ordinance to preserve views out of the front of the home that's adjacent to it. So this property owner is citing this as a unique situation specific to this property and therefore requesting a variance. The only part now that requires a variance based upon the village board amending the fence section on Monday night is the two-thirds of the adjacent lots' front yard setback. And I think the owner is here and can answer any questions or anything that you would like.
Okay, thanks, Tracy. This is, this item is a public hearing, so if there's any, if you would care to elaborate or, or make a statement, you should be standing sworn in by the village attorney. I can't talk today.
If you could just raise, stand up and raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you. Mr. Paysek.
Do, just a reminder, I'm sorry, just a question. Do we approve variances or do we give recommendations?
Recommendation.
We recommend to the village board on this type of a variance.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments regarding the request? I mean, it, it.
I have one.
Yes, go ahead.
Is, there was a, a distance, it was set back the red line anyway, but it was crossed out. Is it not being set back at all then, or do we know?
He is showing it on his fence application as being set back a couple of feet, but he's requesting the ability to actually take it all the way out to the property line. This is just the drawing that came in with the fence application.
Okay. Is it already there?
No, he's, he got a permit for everything except for the portion that's in the corner side yard, and since he had the permit for everything else, we did give him approval to install the post for the portion that's in the corner side yard because he can still install a three-foot-tall solid or four-foot open fence, so.
Okay, all right. Okay, I do think this property is unique in the sense that it's, it's abutting a property that's owned by a public entity and doesn't envision having any residential use in the future, so. Any other questions or comments? Go on, Tracy.
I mean, I will agree that as it currently stands with the ownership of the property to the east being that of the Park District, I mean, okay, uniqueness is one thing, but, you know, what's the hardship here? I mean, I don't see anything anywhere in this application or in the staff report indicating what hardship would occur if this variance isn't granted.
Only loss of views.
I mean, you know, variances are something that should be used very judiciously and sparingly. Otherwise, you know, if they're just granted, you know, routinely, it, you know, circumvents the entire zoning process. I mean, as to the fact that there's no house to the east, okay, well, that's great, but there's still going to be some sort of passive recreation that's going to occur on there. And I would think that line of sight would be something that would be, you know, desirable for people that are using that property as they're approaching, you know, the street.
I would make one comment. Nothing is being circumvented here because we are going through the process of reviewing it, so.
No, no, I understand that. But I mean, it undermines the zoning process. If we just hand these things out routinely, you know, what's, what's the point of having actual, you know, restrictions on zoning districts?
I'm not trying to answer that question, but I will add, what's the hardship if we do grant it?
I'm sorry.
What's, what's the hardship for granting this variance?
That's not the standard. The standard is that they have to prove there's a hardship, not that we say, well, what, you know, what's the worst that can happen if we do?
But I think the standard was put in place to preserve that back lot, the side, the view of the lot to the rear, right? To preserve their, their view.
Right, but I don't, I don't recall anywhere in the text that it, you know, requires that there be a home on that property. It's to maintain line of sight from that specific piece of property.
What, what line of sight for the homeowner? But there's no homeowner there.
Where does it say that's for the homeowner?
There isn't even a street there now, I mean.
It's not, it's not stated that in the ordinance, that when we research ordinances from other communities, that was the reason for the two-thirds setback or the restriction on a fence in a corner side yard is to preserve views from homes and light in there, so.
I think Brian's trying to make a point, so, you know, no, no, he's made his point, let's move on.
Okay, okay. I mean, I think there's a, there's a practical maintenance hardship, if you will, in the, in the respect as the way it sets right now, it's, it's a right-of-way, it's, it's not even a street, so if we don't grant the variance, then we're going to have this, a fence setback from the property line, and by other village ordinances, the homeowner is required to maintain that property.
He might have a setback, why don't we let him tell us?
Okay.
One, one hardship that I could see, and I don't know whether he would point it out or not, but there's, there was trees there. If he sets it back two-thirds, if he sets it back like you're requesting, then he would actually have to take down trees in order to do that.
Well, one thing I'm just going to, you know, my last comment here is, I don't think it's incumbent upon us to argue what his, what his hardship is. He's the petitioner. So far, he's said zero. His application says nothing. So, you know, so far, I haven't heard any testimony from the petitioner as to what this perceived hardship even is.
Well, let's give him a shot.
Okay.
You need a microphone though.
As well, this was actually something that was discussed at, at a staff level. With the new approval standards you have, you may recall that formerly, I think we had seven or eight, and it was very difficult to sustain those standards. This is, it is a balancing test because let me just read the approved standards. This is right out of the revised ordinance, and I know we haven't worked with it that much. You have the, the four approval standards, but there is a paragraph that introduces the different standards, and it reads this way. "The planning and zoning board recommendation and the village board decision on any zoning text, map amendment, or special use permit is a matter of legislative decision." Well, actually, maybe we have to include variance because the word variance isn't in here, although we follow it up with the, the variance standards. And then it goes on to say, "The approval of an application is based on a balancing of these standards." And I think that's what we're, we're doing a good job of right now, our balancing those standards. So I just wanted to give that context to the discussion. We have this lead-in paragraph that talks about the approval standards and that the board is to balance these approved standards, which, which are on our pink sheet that's in the packet. Thank you, Brian.
So, excuse me, sir. Yeah, so I just wanted to say that, you know, when I, when I, when I put the permit in for the fence, I wasn't aware until Tracy was telling me that, you know, I was denied because I had to have a six-foot fence on the easement side of the, of my property, but behind me is all Park District. There's never going to be any houses built back there. On the, on the other side is an easement. There's never going to be a street, from what I, from my knowledge, ever put through that, through my, through that easement side, so. The easement has never been taken care of since I've been there. The property owner adjacent to me used to take care of it. Now, the weeds are just out of control, you know, it's just not good visible. I like to keep my property clean and maintained. As far as the back property, you know, over the years, there's trees falling down all the time. I got grandkids, I want to secure it so that in the future, I can just allow them to play back there. So this is why I, I put in a fence back there after all these years, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nordentoff.
Yeah, thank you. You know, when we, over the years, have looked through the standards and used the standards and trying to measure whether we pass through approvals or, or recommendations, or positive recommendations, or favorable recommendations, I'd have to say that, under a lot of circumstances, that a lot of the, or some, I'll just say some, of the ones that we forwarded favorably have not always met all the standards, and I think not just the variations, because we don't really get variations very often, I think especially use permits in a lot of cases. If we, you know, if we hold to an exact strict meeting of every single standard that's on there without trying to balance them, as was stated earlier, I think probably not very many would ever go through here favorably. When I look at the list here, granted, it's only four, standard number three states the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character nor that be detrimental to the public welfare of locality. And I think that's an important one to take into account here because I think under this particular set of circumstances, when you weigh that against the others, I think that's the one that means the most to me. And I think under, under the existing conditions and the expected future conditions, I really don't think that the, the area would be altered to a point where it's detrimental to the neighborhood on, in a small scale or to a large scale, so I think it's a reasonable request.
Okay. I have a very technical question first. Does this variance, if approved by the village board, only allow this specific fence that is being requested, or would it have to be reapplied for? Fences don't last forever, and at some point in time, a fence is going to require a building permit to be, to rebuild, to be rebuilt. Brian, would this variance?
It usually runs with the land.
It runs with the land, okay. So it doesn't run with the project? That's, that's what I was trying to understand, okay.
I have a question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
My understanding was that you were not going to put the back fence against the Park District lot line, that you were going to move it in. Am I wrong about that?
Yes, I've already, I'm putting it twenty, actually twenty feet.
Okay, so.
From the, from the Park District.
The fence will actually be twenty feet from the Park District.
Yes, sir.
I think the requirement I figured here is like twenty-five. So on that side, we're, you know, he's, he's not slamming it right up against the property line, that's what I thought.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Which gives me a little more comfort.
Okay. So by doing that, that does increase the line of sight capability?
Well, yeah, there's twenty feet back there that's not being fenced.
Yes, sir.
Where's the twenty feet?
In the back line.
He's saying along here.
The back line.
Along here.
Yes.
It's not setback twenty feet.
Yeah.
That's what he's saying, it will, somebody is testifying that it will be.
Okay, well, if you're approving it with that, you, you have to put that as a condition because that's not showing twenty foot of setback.
Okay. Is, is that what you're agreeing to, sir, to have twenty-foot setback from the Park District property?
East property line.
Yes, and I've already spoke to the executive director of the Park District. She doesn't, they said there was no impact to their, I can go all the way down to my property line if I wanted to.
Okay.
She was okay with that, so.
Okay. But just for clarification, you, you submitted this exhibit and it's twenty feet from?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because this exhibit doesn't show the twenty feet.
Yes, sir. At the time, I was going to go to the property line, but, you know, I wanted to be able to have some room to go mow back there, get, you know, clean some trees and whatever, because it's all, it's all, I think Mr. McFarland saw, it's all trees back there, and I'm trying to clean it up, make it look presentable.
So you're amending the, the request that the fence would be twenty feet from that property?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
From the east property line. And is, is there going to be a gate along that property line so that you can?
No, sir. It's all secured. It's all going to be secured back there.
How, how are you going to get to the area that you're going to maintain?
I have a gate on the easement side, on the, on the.
Okay.
So you got to go all the way around to the back to get there, but there's no access besides that. Yeah, we didn't want access back there, so.
I understand, I was just trying to understand a little bit.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Is anybody ready to advance a motion?
Did you open the floor?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't open the floor. At this time, I'll open the floor, thank you for reminding me. This time, I'll open the floor to the public. Is there anyone from the public who would like to ask a question or make a comment regarding this matter? It, it, well, excuse me, sir, you're going to need to come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you weren't in the chamber when we swore in, so we need to swear in.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
If you, if you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
I was looking at the area back.
Your name and address for the record.
Mario V. Soltero. I live at 1735 Bell Plain.
Thank you.
I'm also a guy that put up a fence that you guys held back for, so I came to see what, what's going on with his, and actually, I don't understand what you guys are doing because what we're trying to do is trying to beautify our place, and we try to follow all kinds of rules and regulations that you guys implement, and sometimes the rules and regulations are being abused, you know. I, you know, so I don't really comprehend. I went to the library to look up more village rules and regulations that you guys implement. There's nothing there. And I don't know, do you guys put up rules as you go, or are those rules?
The ordinance is on the internet.
There are on the internet?
If you look at the, the village site, there's actually, and if you put in zoning ordinance, you will see the zoning ordinance. It's on the, on the website.
Are they being changed as we go along, or what?
There was a major change approximately a year ago.
Okay.
We redid the zoning code one year ago.
Because all of a sudden, you know, we're, we're, I don't see, if we're trying to beautify our place and trying to protect ourselves. That's right. It's, it's just asinine that the abuse of, of the village trying to stop us to put up a fence is just, you know, I, I don't understand. So as far as me being up here and, and try to say something, you know, it's going to just go out the window, so, thank you for listening, anyway.
Sir, did you have a comment about this specific issue?
I, I think he's, he did a great job on, on the fence. I don't see anything wrong with it. He did everything that he was supposed to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I have a question. I'm Mary Marquez Barrera, and I live at 1575 Bell Plain Avenue. Going through the neighborhood, on Pacific and Magnolia, there is a six-foot-high fence right on the corner there. So I just, I'm wondering why, why they can have a fence, but we, we can't. Why on Magn, I mean, why on Bell Plain and Pacific, that particular homeowner put up a six-foot-high fence in his backyard, and he's right on Bell, I mean, his, his backyard faces Bell Plain. So I, I just don't understand why one can do it, but the other can't. Where, where we're located, we're located, there's, there's nothing behind us, nor, from my understanding, my neighbor to the east of me called me today, and she said that she spoke with the village about putting up, if they were going to put a street in between her house and my house, and they said no, that there were no plans for a street to be in there. And especially with our grandchildren and our dogs, we have three dogs, and I would prefer that the dogs and the kids were protected from that street if a street ever did go in, so.
You haven't been denied yet.
I, I don't, I'm trying to listen to the, to the mumbo jumbo. I don't, I don't really know. I'm just, I'm just saying, as a, as a mother and a grandmother, we have a grandchild that does live with us, and I just want to protect, protect myself as well as anybody else who would come from the street, you know. We have multiple dogs, I mean, we're a high, high-volume dog-walking area, back and forth, you know, people walk their dogs all the time. I, you know, I just feel, I, we've always had our dogs in a kennel back there, up until recently when we decided to put, you know, that we will put up a fence, that the dogs will be able to run freely. So I, I mean, that's, that, that was kind of my little beef about it, you know, and I just, I hope you guys understand and can, you know, tell us, it's okay to do it.
Okay, so.
Okay, well, well, first of all, we are a recommending body to the village board.
I'm sorry.
We are a recommending body to the village board. We, we don't have the final say that you can or cannot apply for a building permit to do your project. We, we listen to all the testimony, and then we make a recommendation of the village board, and, and they make the final decision. In terms of the specific questions that you asked about other properties.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that Tracy's probably prepared to, to deal with that right now, but what I would say, what I, but I would have to tell you that we view each individual circumstance on its own. There's, there's no reliance on other situations because each piece of property is unique unto itself. So, I mean, separately, Tracy can probably get back to you and give you her, her insight in terms of, you know, what is different about those other projects versus, versus your project, okay?
Yeah, I'd appreciate it because, you know, I, I mean, for me, as, you know, as the citizen, I sat there and I thought, well, I took a picture, actually, of the place today on Magnolia and, and Pacific, because I thought, you know, just so if you needed to refer to that or whatever, you know, I wanted to have the evidence of what, what was there. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Prior to 2015, you could put a fence of six foot in height in a corner side yard starting from the rear elevation of the house out to the corner side property line. The only time you could not was on a reverse corner lot where you had to set the fence back two-thirds of the adjacent lots' front yard setback. Mm-hmm. In 2015, we changed that. People weren't understanding the difference between reverse corner lot, corner lot, they weren't understanding the two-thirds of the front yard setback, so we tried to simplify it. That backfired. People had fences already in their corner side yards, probably the situation that she's pointing to. They're all throughout town, so we decided to change it back to what we had prior to 2015. We went through that text amendment, the village board approved it Monday night. In this situation, unfortunately, this is not a standard corner lot, it is a reverse corner lot, and because of that. Can you explain to me what a reverse corner lot is? Because I, I don't understand. A reverse corner lot is where, if you have two corner lots together, their rear, a standard corner lot is where the rear yards abut each other. In your case, your backyard abuts the front yard of the adjoining lot, so. What, what adjoining lot? The lot to your east. That's their front yard. If that was a residential and not owned by the Park District, that would be their. Across, across, that, that would be with the road. Immediately to your east. Okay, I. That would be their front yard, and the two-thirds of the setback is to protect their views so that as they're sitting in their house, they're not looking out their front window at a six-foot-tall solid fence on either side of their lot. Step it back so that they might get a little view out of the periphery of their windows of a fence, but they're not going to get a full-on view of a six-foot-tall fence. But can you explain to me, is that an improved lot over there? It doesn't matter if it's improved or not. In this case, in this case, you know, your variance request is that this is not going to be a home, it's going to be Park District-owned property, and that is your, you know, petition for your variance in this case. Are you talking about the lot directly behind the Hoseltons? There's a. I don't know the property.
You want to see it?
Pardon me?
You want to see it?
Yes, please.
I mean, what, what's happening here is, your lot is actually the reverse corner lot. Yeah, okay.
Now, now you understand why we changed the ordinance and tried to simplify it.
Where, where's us?
This is you in pink.
Okay.
And this is what we're talking about, this other lot. This is their front yard.
Okay, is this?
Guys, can we, can we have standards?
Is this behind the park?
Edwin, Edwin, and can we have staff do this, please?
We don't have this on overhead, do we?
Tracy's going to.
Mrs. Barr, can you come over here?
Between me and staff.
Can we put it on the overhead or not?
This is how it's difficult.
If we could put it on the overhead, that would be the best.
That would be the best, okay? But, but we should really have staff interpreting.
Yeah. Tracy, if you can find it. We're, we're going to try to, we're going to try to put this diagram up on the overhead so that everyone can see it at the same time.
But Mrs. Barr.
Mrs. Barrera.
There is no lot behind us, it's all Park District.
Mrs. Barrera, what she's trying to do, it just doesn't have anything constructed as. Okay. See, this is your lot right here, okay? And because.
That's how I think of it.
I've got my catch, it's.
Someone else's side of your lot line, as opposed to your real lot line, that makes your lot.
Okay, but there's nothing.
But you can see it's a lot, ma'am, it's a lot.
It's a plotted lot.
It is a lot.
It's a plotted lot.
The Park District may not own that forever, they could sell that off. It's, it's already a subdivided lot.
Okay, okay, all right, okay.
I thought you were talking about this lot.
No, 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 it's, see, it's your lot that, under the code definitions, is a reverse corner lot.
Okay.
Okay.
Lots are standard corner lots. The rear yard of this lot abuts the rear yard of this lot.
Right. This is a corner, this is a reverse corner lot where the corner yard here and the rear yard abuts this guy's front yard, and that's your situation.
Okay.
So, just so that it's clear, the zoning ordinance doesn't forbid you to have a fence, it does have setbacks. There may be instances where you can't put it directly on your property line, and this is a common principle that most, virtually every municipality has in some form. So, let's say, pretend this is your lot.
Okay.
This is the unapproved roadway, and I know this is flipped, and on the map, even though we understand, this is your argument, that currently, this is owned by the Park District, but as you saw on the diagram, this is actually a subdivided lot. Once we give a variance, that variance is permanent. So, if the Park District were to sell this lot, you put a fence right up against your property, they build a house here, they now can't, basically, they're cut off from seeing the roadway, and that's generally why village planners plan that this setback be moved back so that it's not directly on the property line.
That shows the two-thirds of the front yard.
So, so that's why you could put a fence here. Now, if you cannot put a fence either before and after, and I think another gentleman was here, or is here, that was proposing to put a fence right here, that's still not permitted. You have to start from the back of your house and go in this direction. And the reason for that is, there's advantages and disadvantages for living on a corner, but basically, it's for visibility of the neighboring lots because you've got different frontages, and that's, that's what the board is now considering, is the fact that the position has been made, that hey, look, it's unlikely that this is going to be developed even though it's currently a vacant lot owned by the Park District. And on that basis, and the fact, and I think there's further testimony that this right-of-way is currently not developed and it's just having weeds, so that there's, so that, that your proposal is to put the fence close to that area, and they'll give you a greater enjoyment in use of this property, as I understand it.
Yes.
Now, the board will maybe have some follow-up questions, they're going to deliberate, some more make a motion.
Thank you so much, sir. I understand the reverse. That's what I'm trying to say, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to close the floor to the public, but not to the Barreras. Any other questions or comments?
And just to clarify what I heard, Mr. Barr, you're, you're revising your, your request to set the fence back twenty feet from your eastern, eastern boundary, correct?
Yes, off, off the back of my property, yes, to the Park District, correct.
The eastern boundary, okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Is anybody willing to advance a motion? Mr. Pasak?
I move to a favorable, favorable variance for this petition to, to.
A favorable recommendation.
Favorable recommendation, thank you, for this variance petition of Joseph and Mary Barrera at 1575 Belle Plaine Avenue. They're seeking the variance to allow the installation of a six-foot-tall closed fence in the corner side yard setback, and with the twenty-foot setback from the east property line amendment, as we discussed.
Okay. Second. We have a second. Any discussion or clarification in the motion? It was Dave. Any questions or modifications to the motion? If not, can we have roll call, please?
Bow.
No.
Crawford? I'm sorry. Nick Farland?
Aye.
Nortoff?
Aye.
Path?
Aye.
Pasak?
Aye.
Sula?
Aye, motion carries. As I mentioned before, we recommend to the village board, Tracy's your point person to keep on top of this in terms of when the village board will, will hear the matter, and, and they'll make the final decision, yea or nay on it.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Reverse corner side yard, reverse corner lots are the most confusing thing that we deal with sometimes, so, totally understand the, the cloud, so. All right, we have a meeting on the calendar for October 19th, or do we have?
We do not have any public hearings at this point, but we still could have a meeting.
Okay, and you don't have, you don't know of any administrative type things that are pending?
No, it's a good chance we won't have a meeting.
Okay. Motion to adjourn would be in order then.
So, move.
Move, Mr. Nortoff. Second, Mr. Pasak. All favor say, aye?
Aye.
Thank, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.[1791.13]